Yes, I am.
All right, you have two minutes.
I just wanted to make sure we're taking into consideration with the mask mandate on the children with medical issues. My daughter has already chosen to start wearing her masking class on her own, just because she feels more comfortable. But she is in show choir and in PE, she has asthma. And being fully vaccinated, she feels comfortable enough not wearing it when she's doing physical activities, simply because she can breathe easier and we would rather not have her have to use her rescue inhaler. So I'm just wanting to make sure we're taking into consideration and thinking about some of these things that may affect students in the long run and, you know, just that that's something that we're weighing in on. So thank you for giving me a chance to disvoice my concern.
All right, thank you, Kara. Next up, Justin.
I have a special school board meeting tonight to determine if they're going to reiterate their mask mandate.
He was Zoom. Justin, are you there? Justin? He's coming.
I, I, I'm here, sorry, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, go ahead, you've got two minutes.
All right, thank you. I want to start off by saying that the initial guidance by the school board to not mandate masks for this school year was short sighted and has now become an indefensible position. That's the reason for this emergency meeting. Members of the community are not being responsible right now and we have parents who are sending their children to school while still awaiting results of COVID tests. In at least one instance, that child happened to be COVID positive and caused an entire class to quarantine, not even two days into the school year. This kind of malfeasance is borderline criminal negligence, given the circumstances we have been in for over a year now. Additionally, the school board and Monroe County Health Department's guidance to allow siblings of those affected to go to school without also going into quarantine is asinine. We were told that siblings could still attend school unless the sibling that was affected started to show symptoms. By that point, it's too late and they would have likely spread the disease to dozens of others and them to an even wider audience, putting more lives in danger and more people into quarantine. The fact that the school board is kowtowing to the misguided negligent among us is ridiculous. Someone has to be the parent and say, no, that is the job of the school board. The CDC clearly states that we should have universal indoor masking by all students, staff and teachers regardless of vaccination status. All we're asking is that the school board enact the simplest of safety measures that is in line with the CDC's guidance to further mitigate the spread of not only COVID but all airborne diseases. The school district's dashboard shows that nearly 4% of the district is quarantined already and that's data from only four days of school. What percentage is acceptable for this board to act? How many active cases is acceptable to the school board? Is this school board and district willing to underwrite the legal fees for the negligence of the community? We understand that wearing masks is not going to prevent COVID positive cases from arising, but what they will do when worn properly and washed or changed properly is prevent further spread of the disease. This is not a political issue, but a health and safety issue and should not be up for debate. If there are parents who do not want their kids to wear a mask, then they should be the ones who have to do the virtual learning, not the responsible ones who simply want to get an education in a safe environment. Make those who are not willing to participate in a responsible civilized society bear the burden of homeschool or virtual learning, not those who are willing to do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Justin. Next up, Laura Danielson. Laura, you there?
I am here, can you hear me?
Yes, you have two minutes.
Okay, last board meeting, the health department said more adolescents were being affected by long COVID, but did not explain what long COVID is. Long COVID is when a person continues to have or can develop symptoms after the two to four week acute phase. This can be anything from loss of smell or taste, headaches, brain fog, fatigue, joint pain, insomnia, tinnitus, hair loss, organ inflammation, rapid heartbeat and breathing problems. I am long COVID. I have had a brain MRI, heart echo, stress test and a spinal tap, not to mention all the lab work. I am on what may be lifelong medication to help with my headaches. The medication I'm taking currently for my rapid heart rate is not working, so I am looking at probably having an ablation over Christmas time. I'm lucky that the hair that I lost has started to grow back, but the 20 pounds I gained is not going anywhere while my heart continues to be an issue. I have been told where I am at the year mark is probably where I will stay. I am approaching the 10 month mark. I'm worried that this is my life forever. I can't imagine being school aged and thinking of a lifetime of long COVID. Please consider that by masking, you may prevent even one student or staff member from dealing with long COVID. It's a small price to pay to avoid what could become a very long and at times a very painful diagnosis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Samantha Romer. Samantha, are you there? She's got audio, right?
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Okay.
You have two minutes.
Okay, yeah, hi, my name is Samantha Romer. I'm just here to speak on behalf of my five year old as well as the other children and parents of those children who don't align with the proposed mask mandate. I, I just want to say that I sent each of you a copy of this statement as well as the 29 references, scientific references, so. Masks are ineffective for the purpose claimed by the man, proposed mandate, potentially harmful and only authorized for use by an EUA. It's a myth that masks prevent viruses from spreading. The overall evidence is clear that standard cloth and surgical masks offer next to no protection against virus sized particles or small air cells. The size of a virus particle is much too small to be stopped by a surgical mask, cloth or bandana. A single virion of SARS-CoV-2 is about 60 to 140 nanometers or 0.1 microns. And the pore size in a surgical mask is about 200 to 1,000 times that size. Consider that the CDC website states surgical masks do not catch all harmful particles in smoke and that the size of smoke particles in a wildfire are about 0.5 microns, which is five times the size of the SARS-CoV-2 virus. So wearing a mask to prevent catching SARS-CoV-2 or similarly sized influenza is like throwing sand at a chain link fence, doesn't work. There has been one large randomized controlled trial that specifically examined whether masks protect the wearers from the coronavirus. And this study found that mask wearing did not reduce at conventional levels of statistical significance the incidence of SARS-CoV-2 infection. Children have been repeatedly shown not to be drivers of this contagion. It's well accepted that children have a statistically zero chance of dying from COVID. The CDC shows that the K-12 mortality rate from or with COVID is 0.00003%. So any intervention, especially one that is prophylactic, must cause fewer harms to the recipient than the infection. And since children have the lowest death rate from COVID infection, the cost benefit of requiring children to wear an investigational face covering with emerging safety issues is especially difficult to justify. Anthony Fauci was very clear that asymptomatic transmission was not a threat. He stated, "In all the history of respiratory borne viruses of any type, asymptomatic transmission has never been the driver of outbreaks." The driver of outbreaks is always a symptomatic person, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Cassie Salzwedel. Out there? All right, we'll move on then, we'll come back if that one is still there. All right, next up, Nicole Abel Bailey. Nicole? Next up, Johanna Pipkin.
Hi, I'm Johanna Pipkin. I'm a mother of three, a wife and a school district employee. I'm here this evening first and foremost as a mother of three kids. I am not going to throw out data nor statistics about wearing masks or not. I'm here to say I'm a parent and my husband and I want to thank you for thinking of it's your right and your responsibility to make decisions whether or not our kids should be wearing masks. But as their parents, it is our right and we also are a very informed couple to make these decisions on our own. But I also want to touch on the subject of quarantine. I have a freshman and a junior sitting at home because of a quarantine. The first one was September 1st. I was notified Sunday, Sunday, at 11:49, I believe, in the morning. And then I was notified last night at 6:59, my junior, who was exposed Friday. So we got to do all weekend and by the way, my boys are just fine. So my question is, why can't we drop the contact tracing with the quarantine? Maybe it sounded out of notice, which I remember was a few years back, when influenza was horrible. And the school board or the school district sent out a thing saying, hey, this is really on the rise or your class has so many in the classroom. If your child has symptoms, please keep them home. Please do what needs to be done so they are safe and the rest of us are safe. My two boys are struggling because of this quarantine. They are fine, so let's get rid of the quarantine. I hope I'm not speaking on deaf ears, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Jay Clark. Jay Clark? Next up, Bryant Neville.
Good evening, I guess I'm not surprised we're here. Like it was a year ago and we were sending our kids home from school. Took us four months to reverse that, not listen to CDC guidance, send our kids back to school where they belong. However, we only sent them back part time. I'm a, I'm a parent of a child with special needs, that him not being at school was crucial. And we were able to send him, but he wasn't able to see kids all the time. When we send him wearing masks, he can't see, doesn't understand. He needs that nonverbal communication, cannot speak, he needs to see people's faces. When someone's happy with them, he sees that smile, he feeds off that teacher's energy. You put a mask on your face, that hides all that, you can't see his peers. It's very important for him to learn how to communicate and that's what we're working on in his IEP and everything else. It's not able to be accomplished with a mask on his face. Can he really go to speech class and learn speech with a teacher or himself trying to wear a mask? Absolutely not. So I hope you take that into consideration, there are people that cannot wear masks and really it's crucial for them, they're learning, these young kids, they need to see their peers, they need to laugh, they need to smile, they need to be kids again. And it, me as a parent, it is my choice to put a mask on my kid. If I don't want to wear, my child wearing a mask, he shouldn't be wearing masks. If you want to send your kid with a mask on their face, then allow them to do so. That should be our right. That's all I got.
Thank you. Next up, Michael Bonello.
Good evening. I come to you in peace with public health and science. My name is Michael Bonello, a resident of Sparta, Wisconsin. I have a master's of public health degree and 40 years experience in healthcare with 37 years experience administering the care of the elderly, 17 of those years at Moro Home Community where I retired four years ago. I currently do not have a child in the Sparta School District, but did in the early 2000s. I do have a grandchild in Eagan, Minnesota School District, who is required to wear a mask indoors in school. I am here to advocate for masks in the Sparta School District for children under 12, children who currently do not have access to a COVID-19 vaccination. From the CDC Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, updated August 4th of this year, it says, "Given the, given new evidence on the Delta virus variant, CDC recommends indoor, universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students and visitors that came through 12 schools regardless of vaccination status." If you do not believe the CDC, these same guidelines are recommended by the United Nations Children's Fund or UNICEF, the American Medical Association, the American Academy of Pediatric, the National Academy of Medicine, leading pediatric medical colleges in America, including John Hopkins University, University of Minnesota and the Department of Pediatrics, University of Wisconsin School of Medicine and Public Health and also Mayo Clinic and Gunderson Health System and your own doctor. Have you asked your own doctor? I asked mine and my doctor recommended the CDC guidelines I read, I read above. I also petitioned to the Sparta School District titled, "Follow CDC Mask Guidelines in Sparta Schools for Children Under 12", signed by over 200 individuals. I do not have time to read the petition, but I provide copies to the school board. This is not a political statement, this is a public health and safety statement. Please remember, science does not care if you believe in science, science always wins, science does not compromise. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Deborah Smith.
Good evening. I'm here tonight as a proud mother of four graduates at Sparta High School and the grandmother of a five year old who's currently
Can you speak up?
And the grandmother of a five year old Southside kindergartner. I'm very concerned about our students under the age of 12 who have zero protection and zero defense. They have no vaccine available to them, their only defense is to wear a mask. Children depend on us, on adults, on parents and on the school district to protect them, to keep them healthy, to keep them well, from delivery, when they're delivered to preschool, checkups, vaccinations and even sports physicals. That information is all guided by the American Academy of Pediatrics. Their guidance on this subject is very simple and I believe that was in part of the petition that was sent to you all. Their policy states that plan, school plan should start with the goal of keeping students safe and physically present in school. And the way to do that is for all students older than two and all school staff should wear face masks at school unless medical or developmental condition prohibit use. Please use this information, please base your decision on science, on data and on facts. We have an obligation to protect our students, not only at home, but in schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Derek Woodward.
My name is Derek Woodward, I'm a family physician here in Sparta. I have approximately 1,500 patients that I have the pleasure of taking care of in this community. I've had approximately 150 patients with COVID in the last year, many recovered without significant complications. Some have had long COVID, a couple dozen were hospitalized, a few have passed away. I've seen our local reality with COVID. Right now, we have a variant of COVID that's much more transmissible. I went weeks without a patient contracting COVID this summer, I now get notifications daily. Last night, both hospitals in La Crosse, Mayo in Eau Claire and Mayo in Rochester were all full. That meant regardless of what your diagnosis was, they did not have a bed for you. We need to do what we can right now to decrease the spread of this highly transmissible disease in our community. I have daughters in second and fourth grade. The most important thing for our children's education and development right now is to be in school. I understand that just after three days of school, there are well over 100 students on quarantine due to exposure. I've seen patients in my clinic who have had COVID at the time, but I, but I did not catch it from them, I never caught it because both of us were masks. Numerous studies have shown that masks do prevent the spread of COVID despite what some earlier comments were. The best chance that we have of keeping our students in our classroom and learning is to have everyone masked while the levels in the community are high. Wearing a mask protects the person wearing it, only some. Where it really works best is if the infectious person who may not even have symptoms is wearing it. They are much less likely to spread it if wearing a mask. The comment earlier on asymptomatic spread not happening with COVID by Dr. Fauci was a very old outdated comment. We have learned much since then. The good news is that we have a decrease in number of cases this last week from the numbers that came out today in our county. But we are still three times the upper limit of the high transmission threshold. Unfortunately, it takes about two to three weeks with the incubation period to see how things are affected. We have yet to see the real increase from school opening as it has with optional masking. Hopefully with good mitigation strategies throughout our community, we'll continue to see improvements and can get back to normal, which I think we can all appreciate. I recommend we follow the American Academy of Pediatricians and CDC guidelines to adopt universal masking while levels in our community are high.
Thank you. Next up, Stacy Markison.
Hi, my name is Stacy Markison. I want to thank you for serving on the board and I know this has been an incredibly difficult time. I want to echo a lot of what Dr. Woodward had said, um, because I'm also a medical provider. I'm a mother of three children and I'm a concerned community member. I'm going to take a little bit of a different angle. I want you to know that I'm not a clean freak, I'm not a germaphobe, I'm not an overprotective parent. My house is not sparkling clean, it's not disinfected, my children bike around the neighborhood unattended. I allow my, my children to play with their good friends without a mask. But we are in a place in this pandemic where we need to take precautions. Being unmasked indoors with hundreds of other children is irresponsible. It perpetuates the spread of COVID among our children, their teachers and other employees of the school. It leads to missed school days because of illness and quarantine. In Texas, just last week, two middle school teachers died from COVID. They were 41 and 59. We can do better for our kids and for our school employees by simply wearing a mask. It works. There are consequences to optional only masking policies that extend far beyond our school district. Children and staff will become infected with COVID, bring the infection home to their spouses, caregivers, young siblings, grandparents and vulnerable adults. The high number of cases is straining the capabilities of our healthcare facilities, as you heard Dr. Woodward say. And it's also straining the emotional wellbeing of healthcare providers. Many of us are exhausted, but we know we have a long road ahead of us yet. I know that many parents are passionate about unmasking children, but I am passionate about children being able to safely attend school in person. Most children learn best in person. The interaction between staff and students and socialization among peers is an incredibly important part of school. Wearing a mask is a reasonable mitigation measure to preserve these benefits and avoid resorting to community wide virtual schooling, where children often feel isolated, parents feel overwhelmed and teachers can't teach in ways that best serve their students. Last school year, kids proved that they could care for each other by wearing masks. Schools proved that kids could attend in person and remain safe, even during a global pandemic.
Your two minutes is up.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Alice Ackerman.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm here as a private citizen because I am a county employee. First of all, there is a mask guidance in place. It respects the abilities of parents to read and be informed citizens and guide their children and showing their children what is a responsible way in dealing with an illness. I respectfully request you approach the virus from a different perspective. I was very surprised last night when looking for things for this meeting that on November 9th of 2020, the FDA authorized monoclonal antibody treatment for COVID-19. I have no medical background, I'm going to spec, skip a really big long word. There is an alternative treatment available when it is caught early. And maybe what we need to do is stress to parents, A, if your kid doesn't feel good, stay home. If they suspect they have COVID, get them to a place to be tested. Early on, this treatment, which is an infusion that takes one hour in the doctor's office, has between a 70 and 80% effective rate of getting the person over the virus in a couple of days. It prevents them from going on oxygen therapy or being hospitalized. It does not stress our system. This virus unfortunately, from everything I've heard, is here to stay with us. Masking causes huge problems as well. Yes, you may have transmission of the illness if you don't wear a mask. I deal with older adults in our community. The amount of mental health issues in people from constant masking is huge. There are other things besides the virus. Who knows how many other treatments are out there that we don't know about because media says it's either a vaccine or nothing. And the doctors I have found on this agree, you need a vaccine as well. This treatment also works, it's been authorized almost 10 months ago and nobody knows about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Josh Nichols. If you have, just throw them up on the top there and somebody will grab them.
That was our petition, we had 464 members that signed for no mandatory masks in Sparta schools, that was less than a day of gathering those. I stand here again to advocate for optional masks in children. There have been zero peer reviewed studies that show the efficiency in masking our youth. Furthermore, statistics provided by the Wisconsin CDC do not back up the need for masking. Of the 674,248 cases in Wisconsin, ages 0 to 9 account for 4.9%, ages 10 to 19 account for 12.1%. Digging deeper, in both age brackets, 0 to 9 and 10 to 19, they only account for 1% of the hospitalizations respectively. When we consider mortality, our youth are a statistical, or have a statistical improbable chance of death with the ages of 0 to 19 accounting for 0% and 10 to 19 accounting for .0003%. These statistics are widely available and easy to access. If we are using these metrics as a gold standard to protect our kids via forced masking, then I believe we have failed as a community in common sense and rational thought. Of course, there is a concern for the vulnerable members of society and rightfully so. COVID is a serious disease. COVID is a serious disease and can be deadly. But through unprecedented medical invasion, we have safe vaccines available and easily accessible. Not everyone in the demographic affected by serious COVID illness has the choice. They do have the choice to receive the vaccine. Lastly, I propose this board operate more as an individual unit and reduce the amount of influence the Monroe County Health Department has over the board and school district. Their input is extremely vital, but to the same extent, they were not elected to make the decisions on the school matters. You were. This school board represents the community, not the Monroe County Health Department. With that being said, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Kay Cass.
I'm here as a concerned grandparent. I provide after-school daycare to my granddaughter, who is in third grade. Maybe my story is a little bit different. We actually had a death in the family due to COVID. On December 28th, my brother, who happened to live in California where there was stakes for high, died of COVID. He had been in the hospital for over a month. They released him because they needed room for other patients. He went home, and he passed away. This is a tragedy. Yes. I have my granddaughter that I take care of. I also have a granddaughter who is in high school, and I have a daughter-in-law who is a teacher in the Sparta School District. I'm concerned. I'm very concerned. I am a two-time breast cancer survivor. I have an immune deficiency. This is very important to my family and to myself, because I love my children. I love my grandchildren. I love to spend time with them. Before I came tonight, I looked at the dashboard. In less than four or five days of school, there are 15 active cases and 130 people that are quarantined. My daughter, my youngest granddaughter, goes to Herman. There are three cases and 28 quarantined people. My daughter-in-law teaches at Meadowview. There are five active cases and 12 quarantined. My oldest, well, one of my older granddaughters is in high school. She's a junior. There are seven cases and 85 people quarantined. And this is four or five days of school. What's going to happen next week? Are the numbers going to double? Are they going to triple? This is a matter of life and death to a lot of people. These kids spend time with other adults, such as myself, that have health problems. It increases our chances of getting sick. And I thank you for your time, but I think it's time to do something.
Thank you. Next up, Melissa Brooks.
In March of 2020, we were told two weeks to flatten the curve. At that time, we thought that the mortality rate of COVID was 4 to 10%. We rolled with it, happy to do what was necessary to stay safe. We were flexible with the major adjustments to our kids' normal lives. We assumed the following school year, last school year, would be back to normal. And once we found the overall mortality rate was .2%, and statistically zero for school-aged kids, which is who we are here to talk about, not the elderly community. But it was far from normal. This is now the third school year affected by COVID. I continually hear people say, we need to do whatever it takes for the kids to be in school. They need to be in person, and I agree. So what does it take for the kids to be in school? It takes our school board choosing to disconnect themselves from the Monroe County Health Department's close-contact quarantine recommendations. We don't have 60 freshmen quarantined because of an outbreak of COVID. We have 60 freshmen quarantined because of the close-contact tracing that Monroe County recommends. This means that healthy students are being quarantined due to close-contact exposure, regardless of their actual contact. I am asking that students who are sick be asked to stay home until the symptoms have passed. If we continue adhering to this close-contact tracing and quarantine policy, students will be in a never-ending quarantine cycle. Teachers will have to accommodate these quarantined students on top of their normal teaching responsibilities. Students will miss out on yet another year of learning, activities, and school memories. This needs to stop. People know their risks. Those who are fearful can choose to participate in virtual school. Those who are fearful can opt out of athletics and extracurriculars. The rest of us want the school year to be normal. Stop the contact tracing and the quarantining of the healthy. And as a side note, at the last meeting, I heard the board and the administration talk about how students need to be in person for the best learning opportunities, yet we just spent money on establishing a virtual academy. That is a slap in the face to your administrator of that virtual academy to say that her education is somehow subpar to what the other students are getting. If you don't believe in the virtual academy, then don't spend our tax dollars there. And if you do believe in it, then stop using it as a reason to mask our students. Thank you.
Next up, Pat McKenna. Pat McKenna.
Every COVID stat that is shared by the CDC is per 100,000 population control study. This is used because COVID outbreaks were initially in metro areas, and breaking down large metros under control studies the norm. This, however, poses a problem here. I would like to use Monroe County and Cook County, Illinois, to break down what I mean. Monroe County has a population of 45,771 people in 908 square miles. Cook County, 1.15 million in 1,635 square miles. That's a density index of 112 times. In every square mile in Monroe County, we have 50 people. Cook County has 3,150. For every one case of COVID, to reach our 100,000-person metric in Monroe County, that case is multiplied by 2.18. In Cook County, it's divided by 51.5. Based on CDC guidelines of 100 per 100,000 residents, placing Monroe County in red, we would have 50 people in 908 square miles test positive for COVID. We're high. That's one person every 18 square miles. That seems pretty social distancing. Right now, we're at 276 for 100,000. That's one person every 5.6 square miles. I still don't think it's time to panic. Today, Cook County has an infection rate of 138 in 100,000. That's red. It's twice as good as Monroe County, until you realize what population and density means. They have one case for every 2.2 square miles compared to our 5.6. We are not two times worse. We're two and a half times better. Yet, our transmission level is high. And based on current standards that determine our risk, we're going to be high forever. Numbers are just numbers until you break them down.
Next up, Nova Mason. Nova Mason. Oh, wait, hold on before you go. Forgot. So we're at the 30-minute mark, so I need a motion to continue public input.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Mr. Rasmussen, a second from Ms. Presswood to continue public input. All ones in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Okay, come on. This one? Just tilt the mic closer to your mouth there, and then we'll be good.
All right. Good evening, school board members. My name is Nova Mason, and I have two children who attend here at the Sparta High School. I know that this is a very difficult decision to make, and regardless of tonight's vote, there's no way that's going to be appeasing for everyone. I will be the first to admit that I don't like wearing a mask. I find them uncomfortable and inconvenient, but I do wear it when it's necessary. The reality as I see it is if wearing a mask in school is going to allow our children to stay in school, then that's what needs to be done. So I do encourage the school board members to vote yes on Article 904 to reinstate the mask mandate if that means that our kids can stay in school, which is where they belong. I'm not at all unsympathetic to those who feel that the mask mandate isn't at all ideal. Some of the points that have been brought up this evening are very valid, and quite frankly, I agree with those. But what I do have issue with is repeating last year's horrible cycle. I do think that the lesser of two evils, when given the choice, is to wear a mask in school versus having our student body and faculty in an at-home learning environment. Our children have already missed out on so many opportunities due to last year's crisis, and if this year follows last year's path, I again worry the long-term effects that this important decision tonight will play on their immediate future. They need to be in school, and if that means wearing a mask to help mitigate those risks, then that's what should be decided upon this evening. My son, who's a freshman and a new student in the area, he, like all other freshmen, needs to be offered the ability to build in-person student-teacher and peer-to-peer relationships, which are an important part of building blocks for a healthy high school career. And my daughter, who's now a junior, has a hefty class load full of AP classes and the needs of in-person teaching so that she can perform her best and have her teachers and peers assist her along the way. So I'd like to conclude by saying, if it means that our children can stay in school and the little exchange for that is to wear a mask, then again, I say to vote yes on Article 904 so that our children can stay in school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next individual, Rachel Frazee. Okay, thank you. Next up, Ryan Celebrate. Next, Conrad Olson.
To be here tonight on this subject, I'd be lying to say that I'm surprised. To be back here tonight after being here two weeks ago on this subject, I gotta say I'm a little puzzled. I have two girls in the Sparta schools, both in cataract. Two weeks ago, I listened and observed as both parents and community members gave you information on how masks have a negative impact on children's learning. Tonight is no different than that night. To bear the weight of the decisions from this past year had to be difficult. You were elected into your positions by the people in this room tonight, and I believe you listened as you made your vote, even if you weren't sure, you listened. Those who deny freedom to others deserve it not for themselves. Please do not mask my children. They are at the age of innocence that, when forced to conform to the dehumanizing face coverings, they may never get it back. I want Sparta to stand strong when times get tough and be a leader of what is right for our children. Push through the hard times to get to the good ones. Because if we all just gave up and gave in when hard choices had to be made, none of us would have gotten anywhere. We're not Milwaukee. We're not Madison. We're not even La Crosse. We're a small-town Sparta. We have each other's backs when times get tough, and I ask you to have ours when you make your vote tonight. This virus is not going away, not with masks, nor vaccines, or a combination of both. And it is certainly not going to go away with forcing my five- and seven-year-old to wear a mask for eight hours a day. Keep Sparta open, keep learning choices available, and keep my children's innocence alive. Because if we lose that, we, all of us, have taken that, and that is all that is good in this world.
Next up, I have Marla or Jim Leveridge. I'm assuming Marla's probably going first. Jim, you'll be later on. I'm going in order.
Good evening, board members. I have spoken to you in the past, and you know, I know that some of you probably already have your minds made up that you're going to mask our children at school because the CDC and the administration have decided that this is the right thing to do, because they want students in the classroom. And the only way that they can get the students in the classroom is if they are masked, because masks will prevent the spread of COVID. But that statement is false. There has been no statistical study that shows that masking of students is going to prevent the spread of COVID. If the Monroe County Health Department has given you actual documentation of a study that is statistically significant, then I would like to have evidence of that, as well as you probably want that evidence, if this is the kind of measures that you are going to be enacting on the students in Sparta schools today. The CDC, in May, released a study which analyzed 90,000 elementary students in Georgia schools and found that there was no statistically significant difference in schools that required students to wear masks compared to schools where masks were optional. I have that study right here. I know that we've also presented other, other people have presented you with statistical evidence that masks, even on their box, says that they are not going to prevent the spread of any viral infection such as COVID. So all I'm asking you is to use your common sense and follow the science instead of CDC recommendations that don't have any foundation of a scientific study. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Anthony Sholsey.
Hey, first and foremost, I'd like to thank you for your commitment to the school board. Purpose of my letter is to reach out as a concerned parent of Sparta School District. My wife and I have two students currently enrolled in the district, as well as three homeschooled children. We homeschool our younger children for medical reasons. Our 10-year-old Hannah is diagnosed when she was five with childhood onset systemic lupus. It's an extremely rare autoimmune disease for children to acquire. Her treatment protocol encompass a number of medications, including many trips to Madison Children's Hospitals for specific meds which can only be administered through an IV, all of which affect her immune system, leaving her immune compromised. Hannah is 10 again, and she cannot get the vaccine. We have two high school students. They want to be involved in school, other extracurricular activities, the way for our children to be able to attend school and school activities, sports, as if we use masks and it's in place to protect our younger daughter, who would otherwise be made vulnerable. This said, your decision's bigger than our medical issues. We're not the only family in the Sparta School District with a child with a compromised immune system. We say, how many does it take? It's only one, right? We're not the only people in Sparta community that need your help protecting our vulnerable populations. One hospitalization, one death, one too many that could be completely preventable. In the last two weeks alone nationwide, our youth make up a quarter of the positive COVID-19 cases. I've been a member of Sparta my entire life. I know some of your families better than others, traveled with you, coached your children in sports, went to school with you and your children myself, and I wish only the best for you and your families. But to those of you that voted to make it optional at the last meeting, take a moment, think to yourself, what if it was my daughter that had cancer? My son that had multiple sclerosis? Would you vote the same if it meant protecting your child? We have children in the community that do have these diseases, and they do need you to protect them, not out of entitlement, but true need. Please think about them as you cast that vote tonight. Be clear, I voted for each of the yes votes. So as a constituent of yours, a concerned parent and citizen of Sparta, to protect those who need the protecting, I'm asking you reinstate the board policy Article 904, which requires face coverings in all school buildings. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next up, Gina Blazek.
Board members.
Board members and Dr. Van Duren, first of all, I'd like to thank you for your service. I am speaking tonight to ask you to vote again to keep masks optional. Line seven of the proposed mask policy says athletic teams and physical education class will follow WIAA rules for face coverings. I went to the WIAA website. I cannot find a list of rules. They do not make rules for our school. The WIAA offers guidelines and recommendations in the same way that the Monroe County Health Department makes recommendations for our school. When we went back to school in January of '21, when we took off our masks for summer school, and when you voted 10 days ago to keep masks optional, you went against the recommendations of the Monroe County Health Department and the WIAA. Please continue to listen to the recommendations of the parents and students in Sparta. Please vote to keep masks optional.
Next up, Heidi Lyden.
Hello, my name is Heidi Lyden, and I am here as a parent of potential future Spartans. I ask that you allow masks to be optional. I have two boys, currently ages three and one. When I was growing up, I was raised to believe in yourself and to stand up for what's right, even if the masses appear to think differently. Throughout this whole pandemic, I've done just that and raised my family accordingly. I've done outside research through numerous sites and sources, and I have determined on my own that what appears to be happening in this community, state, country, and world is not what they tell you on the news. I'd like to say that I'm not here because I think your meetings work. I'm here to let you know that regardless of this meeting outcome and any political outcome from here on out, I plan to continue to raise my family based off of my rights my grandfathers fought for. I know too many people who fought, died, and lost so much of their life for our freedoms, and it's time we get back to the basics. We don't need your school to be successful humans. I will consider pulling my children from this district, and if any other districts decide to be political about their decisions, I will be forced to homeschool my children. Then the district can't give funding for having my children on their grounds. I wish these meetings were held for the actual benefits of our children's safety and, most importantly, their education, but I think too much noise in the world has caused us to lose sight of the big picture. Please dig down deep in your gut and make your decisions based on what you truly feel is right, regardless of that noise. I've put a lot on the line tonight by speaking about my opinions. As a small business owner in this community, I could lose business over what I just shared, but I think our children, their education, and, most importantly, their freedoms are worth way more than money. Thank you for your time.
Next up, Joshua Harazin.
Good evening. I'll start by saying, I don't think anybody enjoys wearing a mask. I don't think anybody enjoys making their kid wear a mask, another thing to double-check in their backpack every morning. They're hot, and they're uncomfortable, and we've all heard it all. But they're manageable, certainly more manageable than another year of distance learning, and our kids aren't even allowed to attend school on a regular schedule, and they miss out on learning opportunities and important social interactions. For families, it's another year of scheduling conflicts or even financial hardships because a parent had to stay home or find alternate care for those children. An article published just last week examined two school districts in Texas, neighboring districts 12 miles apart, one with mask mandates, the other without. Just three weeks into their school year, the district without mask mandates saw a COVID-positive rate among students and staff approaching 5%, almost 5% in just three weeks. The district with the mask mandate, less than 2%. Let's face it, this decision tonight may be a yes or no on a mask mandate, but what we're really having to choose here is yes on a mask mandate now or yes on setting ourselves up for another year of virtual learning soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Curtis Miller.
We are here today to discuss putting our children full-time in masks. When I look at the overall percentage of active cases, we're at 0.45 percentage for the district. It concerns me that we would consider forcing all 2,904 students to wear a mask for an infection rate of less than half of a percent. Families should have the right to decide what is in the best interest of their child's health. I personally do not believe the mask is healthy for my son, both physically or mentally. According to an article put up by the University of Southern California, "Masking is a psychological stressor for children and disrupts learning. Covering the lower half of the face of both teacher and pupil reduces the ability to communicate." There are numerous documented adverse health effects with wearing masks, including lower oxygen levels, higher carbon monoxide intake, and general bacteria he's breathing in all day long. For me, when I compare the possible health damages the masking causes in comparison to the low active cases, the choice to keep the mask optional seems like the only option. Allow the parents a decision in their child's well-being and best interest. This is a virus... This is a virus that can be dangerous, but is also has a survivability rate of 99.9%. I urge you to keep my child's health and mental well-being in my hands where it belongs.
Next up, Bethany Schonenberg. Bethany Schonenberg? Next up, Ryan Oswald.
My question to you guys are, seriously, why are we here? Why are we debating masks? Nobody here that I've heard has said, and I haven't seen anywhere, of how masks help. I've actually seen studies that show the complete opposite, that masks actually spread sickness more. I've seen you guys drinking your water, touching your mask, you're breathing on, putting spit particles in, touching objects, touching pens, putting it around, people touching this mic right here. It's ridiculous. There's already studies shown that there's no difference in schools that are requiring it, requiring masks and not requiring it. So, and then other people are talking that we need to require masks for the safety of the children and everything else. We've already tried that. What happened when we required masks? School was shut down, if you don't remember. The definition of a sanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different outcome. Why? Why are we doing this? I've heard multiple people up here talking, and they had to remove their mask, or we couldn't barely hear them because they had something covering their face. Is that what we want our teachers to do, talking to our children where the kids probably can't even hear them barely? Everybody talks about what Dr. Fauci recommends or the CDC recommends. Well, then maybe we should listen to what Dr. Fauci said at one time, and I'll just play an audio clip real quick. It's a short one.
Listen to the experts, just don't listen to the expert closely.
Right now, people should not be walking, there's no reason to be walking around with a mask. When you're in the middle of an outbreak, wearing a mask might make people feel a little bit better, and it might even block a droplet, but it's not providing the perfect protection that people think that it is. And often, there are unintended consequences. People keep fiddling with the mask, and they keep touching their face.
And can you get some schmutz sort of staying inside there?
Of course, of course, but when you think masks, you should think of healthcare providers needing them and people who are...
So, should we listen to him then? Masks are pointless. If we're gonna be hypocritical, Monroe County Human Services said two people have been hospitalized that are age 18 or under with COVID. Guess what numbers skyrocket that? The flu. Have we ever done this for the flu and required masks? Guess what? Law-abiding gun owners countless times have saved lives. Are we gonna start making teachers carry guns now if we're gonna start going down this path just thinking that masks might help? My question is, stop talking about masks. We need to talk about quarantining and why and what we need to change there. Keep the kids in school. If you're sick, go home. That's it. There's no reason at all to quarantine everybody and to require masks. If you're sick, go home, just like the flu, since it's not even as deadly or as serious as the flu according to right here in Monroe County. Thank you, guys, for your time, and I'm sorry we're all here having to talk about this again. Thank you.
Next up, David Palpepper.
Evening. So I came here with two simple questions for the board. First, what changed from August 24th to now? So, many of the presenters before me have more eloquently addressed this than I ever could, but I'll leave you with this. I remind you that both the state legislature and the state Supreme Court have made it very clear they do not intend to support endless infringements such as mask mandates upon individuals under the guise of emergency authorities. My second question, what is a face covering? Is a face covering, as referenced in Article 904, a medical device? It's a simple yes or no. Sports applications aside, Merriam-Webster defines face masks as "a medical covering worn especially to reduce the spread of infectious agents." While both sides of the mask argument can provide numerous sources to either support or oppose the efficacy of such muzzles, the point remains, you cannot force medical devices on persons who do not consent. As supported by numerous public health authorities, the voluntary consent of the person on whom the experiment is to be performed must be obtained. Simply put, lack of consent means there is no consent. This includes enforcing medical devices such as face coverings on my children. Let me be crystal clear here, I do not consent to the imposition of face coverings as a medical device on my children. Furthermore, furthermore, I do not recognize Article 904, which purports to use face coverings as a pseudo-medical device, as within the legitimate jurisdiction of this board. In conclusion, I think I speak for well more than myself when I ask, when is enough enough? I implore you, our electors, to use the backbone we the people elect you for. Take a stand and tell the larger community enough is enough. No more draconian muzzle mandates. Hold fast to the mission reflected at the bottom of your very own agenda, to educate all students academically, emotionally, and socially to inspire curiosity and resilience. My children will maintain unmasked and unafraid, whether that be with your school district or otherwise. Thank you.
Next up, Aaron Brooks. Aaron Brooks.
So when I walked out the door tonight, I didn't know if I could offer any nuance to the discussion that happened last time or the discussion that preceded me this time. So I want to do two things. I want to first reiterate a previous speaker. He said that, you know, he observed about five people with masks on, either touching the microphone or so mumbled you couldn't hear that. So one of those speakers, which was the first speaker, actually pulled the mask down to speak. And keep in mind, this is with a microphone. This is amplified speaking. The second speaker was so mumbled, and she was asked to speak up. And then she proceeded to hold on to the microphone the entire time. All but one of those speakers out of those five was mumbled. And on the third one, somebody turned up the microphone because we couldn't hear the person. Okay? So when we're in a classroom and a teacher doesn't have a microphone, how does education happen? The fact is, it's not gonna happen, or it's gonna be affected, effective in a bad way. Like, teachers, teachers can't have a PA system in their classroom to teach. You know, so today at work, I work at Matthews Archery, I had to wear a respirator, cartridge respirator, and the reason why is because I was sanding a piece of wood. Okay? So OSHA says that if a particle size is under 10 microns, we have to wear a respirator. The size of an aerosol particle on which COVID travels, one micron. As I looked around the room tonight, I didn't see one person with a mask on that would pass for sanding a piece of wood, much less prevent any COVID spread. Thank you.
Next up, Jacob Stafford.
Hello, I'm Jacob Stafford. I've been part of the community for 11 years here. The mask mandate, I am not for it. I'm not for it, for my child, for anybody's child. If you choose to wear a mask, I think that is your right, and that is great. Everybody has their rights and their freedoms, and they should. If you feel safe with it and it's effective, then wear a mask. If it's not safe, then what is the reason that we all have to wear it? If you guys feel it's appropriate to wear masks, then wear them. Give the children an option. My child deserves the right, as long as every child in the whole school district, to share a smile, to share a laugh, to share a frown, to show emotion with the bottom half of their face. By mandating a mask, which has been reiterated, that it is medical advice. Look at the FDA's definition of medical advice. It does include a mask. And until you have signed consent from every parent in the school district or every legal guardian, you are illegally doing this. So some people may want to argue the fact that, do you want to be held liable because we don't wear masks? My question is, do you want to be held liable to an illegal activity? Because by mandating a mask for every child that's in the school district is illegal. Plain and simple, it's illegal. I appreciate your time, I appreciate everybody on the board, I appreciate everybody for showing up, those masked and those not. For those that wear masks, I applaud you. That is dirty sitting. To decide that my child needs to wear masks and lose her childhood is not fair. It is not fair to my child, it is not fair to humanity, it is not fair to Monroe County. If Monroe County wants to argue this and say that Monroe County Health Department decides that masks are mandated and whatnot, I would like them to go around and get legal consent from every individual in this community. I stand with other parents in this room, where if you're gonna mandate masks for my child, I am not afraid to pull my child out of the schools and move them to a district where they not mandate masks. My wife is also a teacher in this district, and she doesn't feel masks are necessary. She doesn't have, you know, she does not want, feel comfortable coming here in front of everybody for that reason. She feels that could jeopardize her job. And to place that kind of pressure on them, any teacher, any faculty, any board member, anybody in our community, is a shame. And I'm not saying that it's down to one decision, but the decision has to be made. Where if you want to wear a mask, great, that's good, that's good for your decisions, that's good for your mental health, maybe it's good for your physical health. My daughter, that is not the case. She comes home crying last year.
Mr. Stafford, you have two minutes.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. Everybody here.
Clay Callumber. Clay Callumber.
Thank you, guys, for your time. I want to address what someone recently just said regarding a PA system in classrooms. That's a much smaller setting, and it wouldn't require a PA system. I mean, I'm pretty sure we can all hear each other just fine, you know, in a classroom setting with a mask on. setting with a mask on. We also just recently had two health professionals stand up here and stress the importance of masks. If we're not listening to the doctors, then where is our information coming from? Who are we as amateurs to sit here and argue over this? I say we trust the professionals, the same people we we run to when we're sick and we need care. A previous gentleman slammed down a stack of papers here and told you you the board need to disregard the Monroe Health County Monroe County Health Department and do your jobs as elected board members. But isn't it your job as members to listen to all angles of the issue? I would like to also iterate that everybody in this room has a common goal as a community to keep our kids safe and in school. If there are any methods to mitigate that or if there are any methods of mitigation towards this common goal, then administrating and administering the practice should be a no brainer. This isn't about my opinion or about anyone else's in the room. It's about keeping our kids safe and providing them a habitat for them to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Brad True.
Good evening. Studies, data, reports. There's a tremendous amount of content out there on both sides of this topic. I've personally spoke with doctors. Who have said that masks are nothing more than a feel good tool. An earlier speaker said that our board is by allowing opt this mask being optional, that the board has acted carelessly. I'd like to remind you of the decisions that you've already made and to be confident in them. My understanding is that we've installed air purification systems, gone to vast extra cleaning measures in our schools, sanitization procedures. To say that the decisions that we've made to this point are not safe is ridiculous. COVID is a virus. It's here to stay. It's not going to go away. It's not going to go away by the end of the school year, probably not for five years. I spoke with parents very recently. They do not want to mask their kids. But they've been led to believe by discussions from people in our administration that the only way that they can keep their kids in school is by putting masks on. Is that the best that we can come up with? That that's the best we can do? Parents are going to they're going to concede because what they're being told. So we say that if we wear masks, then we have more lenient quarantine policies. And if we don't wear masks, then the Monroe County Health Department, they're going to they're going to continue to quarantine a vast number of students. I'd like to ask you this, if masks are so protective, then why did it take so long to return to school last year? They weren't good enough last year, but now they're the solution. I ask that you keep masks optional. Stop following the Monroe County Health Guidelines. Develop your own procedures and guidelines. We have created many options for students and families. Let's continue to keep those options intact. Please vote no to a mandate and bring us a better solution, a solution that you guys develop. We are not under the thumb of Monroe County Health Department. I have talked to some of you. You are led to believe that that is not the case. If your attorneys are telling you that, get another opinion. We deserve it. I ask that you make this decision very carefully and that you look at all options and don't feel pressured that the gavel has to drop tonight. Keep our kids in school.
Next up, Julie Ender. Julie Ender.
Thank you everyone for the opportunity to speak in front of the board this evening. I come to you as a faculty member at Sparta High School and as the SDA Sparta Education Association Union President. With that being said, I do not, I do not speak for everyone employed in the Sparta Area School District. I'm speaking to you tonight as a representative of the governing body of the Sparta Education Association. Someone has already said, several people have already said, we don't like wearing I think that we can also agree, everyone here, that the best option is to stay in school five days a week. Face to face with our kids. That's the best for me. It's the best for my students. I don't have a crystal ball to look into and tell you what is right, what is true, what is wrong, whatever. You guys have a very difficult decision tonight. And I just want you all to know that the Sparta Education Department or excuse me, the Sparta Education Association will stand behind your decision and support you. Thank you for everything you have done during this incredibly difficult time. And I I want to thank all of our administrators as well for your incredible support.
Thank you. Next up, Jim Lovrich.
Thank you very much. So I've served in your role before and I recognize how difficult it is. But I do feel that this is not your decision to decide the fate of these children. Mask to mask is not face to face. It's a whole different way.
Why, please let him talk.
If you really think that. You need to change your policy, which is already an excellent policy because it gives people their own choice. I've been here 61 years. I'm an old man and I really don't believe a lot of what's going on here. And I think that. The liberty that we have in this country to choose on our own is important and that's what you're elected to do as a school board because we're a little small community. And as someone else stated, you have all kinds of facts about Monroe County being very different than Cook County. Okay, and the CDC has been giving you all kinds of data that's irrelevant and inaccurate and they change it all the time. So. If you really want to be leaders and you want to change this policy that you're going to have tonight, we just spent 30 million bucks on a new building. Get your administrative staff together and figure out how you're going to have school delivered the normal way in some of the buildings and school delivered a different way for people that wanted a different way in your other buildings. Don't just use this mask thing to mask your decision. If you really want to make a change, then get to work making a change that gives people a choice to go to school in a masked environment and a non masked environment. Thank you very much.
Next up. Misty Morales.
Hello, I'm Misty. Can you all hear me out there? Loud enough? All right. I'm loud, I need to be louder. All right, so first I'd like to say there were a few doctors that came up. And I I don't know what they doctor, they may be podiatrists. So therefore I'm I'm not, I cannot go off of what they say for their statistics. My husband and I have two students enrolled in the Sparta Area School District. I'm here to express my concerns over the discussion of the mask mandate. We were here not long ago. So again, this is probably sounding like a broken record at this point, but why, why are we here again? Our our children stayed home last year and that was my husband and I's decision. We felt that that was in the best interest for them at the time. We were wrong emotionally, mentally, physically. It broke them. And. I wish I could take that back. However, we are learning from our mistakes. This year, I would like to see more of. No, no children being left. Where they have to be, sorry, where they have to be. One way or another. You either have a. A school with the masks or a school without the masks. Not, I mean, we're we're already as a community being divided. Families are arguing, friends are arguing. And and there's just why. So this year we we started out with masks optional. Our children were ecstatic to go back to school. They were both in, they are both in fall sports. They're really enjoying school so far and already have made new new friends. But there's two, two different things that I really like to voice here. One. Is the the time that our children are in masks. Being picked up at on the bus by 6:05 in the morning. If you are going to mandate masks, they would have to wear a mask on the bus as well. If that if I know correctly. Now students will be all day in that mask. And then now with our two children who are in sports, they would go to practice and wear those masks as well. Now, what about game nights?
Ms. Morales, you have your two minutes, but I will give you the opportunity to make your second point real quick.
Thank you. What about game nights where like varsity, they don't get home until nine, 10 o'clock at night? So they are wearing those masks. That's 12 hours a day, if not more. My, the other thing that I really wanted to bring up is our children's mental state. At this point, I feel like it's it's. Next, next, we're going to be here thinking, talking about, okay. And I know this sounds like a stretch, but suicide. Because I am seeing a huge decline in not just my family, but my children's friends. They they feel like there's so much argument and they're so, they have nowhere, they don't know where to turn. So and they need to get back out there, be children is what I'm trying to say. They need to smile. They need to embrace and be children again. Thank you for your time.
Next up, Anthony Boltick. Anthony Boltick. He's coming.
Good evening. I'm going to approach this with a little bit different approach here on the mask mandates. The ones that you are elected and and I know wholeheartedly try to support and represent the children that attend the school district here in Sparta. Looking at the CDC, British Medical Journal and the KFF on their independent studies on the increase of suicidal tendencies and substance abuse. That's something that great people back there in that corner will have to deal with long after this pandemic is gone. CDC did a study in June, the first 30 days of June of 2020, where they had, they did both under 18 and over 18. 18 to 24 year olds, which would be the majority of the students' parents in the elementary schools here, 25.5% of them reported that they had suicidal thoughts or attempts in the past 30 days. Think of these children that have to watch that, hear that, respond to that at home. And then you look underneath the 18 and under. 18 and under across the United States during June 24th to 30th of 2020, overall, 40.9% of the respondents reported at least one adverse mental or behavioral health condition, including symptoms of anxiety disorder or depressive disorder, 30.9%. Symptoms of trauma or stress related disorder related to the pandemic, 26.3. Having started or increased substance abuse to cope with the stress or emotions related to COVID-19, 13.3%. So I wanted to cross reference the CDC because I do question some of the information that they had. KFF in the same timeframe, substance abuse was now 25% same timeframe in 2020 compared to 13%. They were pretty close, 13.3%. Suicidal thoughts, 26% to 11%. When you look at it, overdose deaths due to opioids and illegal substances and prescribed substances in 2020 was 93,331 throughout the United States. That's a pretty, pretty significant number. 20,000 people increased. So once I could see this pandemic lasting and having the result of going three different ways. Either the United States would develop herd immunity. There is an actual vaccine. Now I saw that there's discussion that there's up to 4,000 variants of this. So how long are these masks going to be forced on people? Or the 2024 administration change or elections? Either way, mental health is going to last a lifetime for these people. And your decisions because of their feeling that they are being isolated, that the lack of direct communication just by the mask is seen as a barrier, this mental health issue is going to continue with them for years. So I looked at it also and wanted to see how many violent incidents in the school districts or the schools of the United States have already occurred in 2021? 15. So now will you wear that on your hands that this undiagnosed or triggered mental health issues are triggered by this decision here? I hope to God nothing like that should happen here in Sparta. But I don't want to be in your position.
Next up, Amy Lopez.
If you can keep your head about you when all, what, excuse me. If you can keep your head when all about you are losing theirs and blaming it on you. If you can trust yourself when all men doubt you, but make allowance for their doubting too. If you can wait and not be tired by waiting or be lied about, don't deal in lies or be hated, don't give way to hating and yet don't look too good nor talk too wise. If you can dream and not make dreams your master. If you can think and not make thoughts your aim. If you can make meet with triumph and disaster and treat those two imposters just the same. If you can bear to hear the truth you've spoken, twisted by naves to make a trap for fools or watch the things you gave your life to broken and stoop and build them up with worn out tools. If you can make one heap of all your winnings and risk it in one turn of pitch and toss and lose and start again at your beginnings and never breathe a word about your loss. If you can force your heart and nerve and sinew to serve your turn long after they're gone and so hold on when there is nothing in you except the will which says to them, hold on. If you can talk with crowds and keep your virtue or walk with kings nor lose the common touch. If neither foes nor loving friends can hurt you. If all men count with you, but none too much. If you can fulfill the unforgiving minute with 60 seconds worth of distance run, yours is the earth and everything that's in it and which is more, you'll be a man, my son. If by Rudyard Kipling is a poem about becoming a compassionate, well rounded, self governed, thinking, human being. This is also the goal of the parent and the educator. If this goal is to be realized, our children must have access to education that allows for independent thought and action. Tonight, we claim for our children all the beauty and freedom that comes with the ability to discern for oneself, right, just and independent thought and behavior. We may attempt to influence others, but we must never attempt to control them. Thank you very much.
All right, we're going to come back to the individuals that weren't here before. Nicole Ebbell Bailey. And Jay Clark. All right, that ends public input. Did I miss you? No, I remember seeing you, Sarah. Yes, Sarah, you can come. Yeah, no, I saw it. I must have. Yeah, it's here. Sorry, Sarah.
That's okay. Board, I thank you for seeing the importance of public input and giving us the
Board, I thank you for seeing the importance of public input and giving us the time to share with you tonight. I'm surprised by the medical professionals that have already presented that they didn't call coronavirus for what it is endemic. We will be seeing spikes every year, just like the flu. Yesterday morning, citizens of Monroe County went before the health committee and told them enough is enough. Stop all contact tracing, stop all quarantining, stop threatening the school districts with legal action. Stop treating COVID like a pandemic. Stop threatening to get the police involved with students not adhering to quarantine guidelines. The county health director was overstepping and making threats instead of guidance. Within hours, Sparta School District calls a special meeting to reinstate the face mask policy. Why? Is it because you have been using the county as your excuse to adhere to their orders? And now that you see the county's authorities slip away, you want to make sure that you still have control? Because that's what this is about, control. Parents want their rights back. This is ridiculous. This is not about safety. Because we see you in the community choosing freedom in regards to face masks. At your work, in businesses, coffee shops, the crowded pool this summer, parties, concerts. This has turned into a do as I say, but not as I do. Get back to the business of educating our students. I for one am tired of seeing this board waste its time on face masks and COVID stuff. A large part of your students are struggling to read and do math at grade level. Teach them to read, teach them to do math, teach them true history so they will be proud to be an American. So I propose you abolish all emergency policies immediately. Place coronavirus in the same category as influenza because that's what it is. Stop trying to scare us. We are done with fear. What we want is freedom.
All right. That ends public input. Moving on to business, item A, discussion of possible action to reinstate board policy article 904, face coverings in school with proposed changes. Dr. Van Durin.
Mr. Stearman, can you put up the presentation, please? Mr. Stearman, would you put up the presentation, please? Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? I would like to go to slide nine, please. Slide nine, please. The rest of those slides, if there are board questions that I can answer, I will go back to them. Otherwise, uh, presented is policy 904. With the adjustments that you saw this weekend, with the substitute that of WIAA guidance versus rules, um, that was pointed out, good catch. So I will, um, leave it to you to ask the questions you want to ask.
Any questions from the board? So just for clarification on the athletic teams official, or number seven, I should say, just number seven. That means when athletics are happening or FIAD or kids are outside, face mask will be optional, correct?
That is what the WIAA is recommending at this time.
Thank you.
There is one clause here that says continuation of the COVID accommodation to allow the most recently defeated opponent to advance in the tournament, tournament if a team is unable to advance because of COVID. So typically, actually what's been happening is our athletic director gets together with the athletic directors in the conference and they come to some agreement about how they're going to go. And if there's a doubt, home court generally rules. So if a venue is more restrictive than we are, then we respect their venue.
Thank you. Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll take commentary. Mr. Solberg.
I have a few questions. Where we are sitting right now with the, uh, what the administration had to do over the weekend.
Sure.
And, uh,
Yep.
that process and where it might have been.
Absolutely. So if you go to slide seven, please. Okay, so essentially, we are following. I'm sorry, I'll just have to speak louder. We are following the CDC guidance, uh, in that if we are within six feet and unmasked, then we don't have, we are not considered a close contact and we don't have the three feet in universal masking. So what happens when there's a positive case is we go in and contact trace. That means we go back and we figure out where that student has been, who they've been in contact with. And right now, that's taking approximately 15 to 20 hours of a minimum time commitment per positive case. Um, because as we go back, any classroom, especially at the high school level, where they go to four different classes per day. So once we know where they've been, we can start finding ways to reduce that overall number. So that requires talking to teachers, checking the seating charts, phone calls to families. Uh, it's very time, um, time consuming. And you will also note that they were doing this over the weekend. That one parent mentioned they got a call at 11:43 on a Sunday morning on a holiday weekend. They were working through the whole weekend. The other reason we do this is because if we didn't, you would find out Friday. And now we're looking at potentially people who could be infected coming to school the following week. If we did less contact tracing under the current mitigation, we would have very likely significantly more quarantines than we do right now. With our universal masking and three foot physical distancing or six foot physical distancing without, uh, masking, which we can't do without going to cohorts because our buildings occupy too many people. Then the risk would be relatively low. So to answer your question, this weekend, a minimum of 60 to 80 man hours? Ms. Cooley, is that? Yeah. Um, divided between five, six people? Maybe more than that by the time all the phone calls are made and all the tracing and watching the video and contacting teachers and all of that, so. And by the way, we're doing all of that without adding additional staff. Uh, we need to be very careful about who does that because of HIPAA and privacy and, and those pieces.
Correct, that's sensitive information. And and we're, and we're, the district is doing that to help minimize the quarantines issued.
Excuse me?
The district is doing that to help minimize the quarantine that have to be issued.
Yes.
And that's, but that's not at a sustainable level.
No. If we were universally masked, we could target those quarantines much better. We could, we'd have the three feet, be universally masked. And we would have fewer quarantines.
Any other questions, Mr. Solberg?
Not right now.
Any other questions from the board members?
I make a motion, we reinstate board policy article 904 as presented.
Mr. Burns Gilbert.
The mic on, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So I just want to make some comments, uh, thank you Nancy. Just going through my list here, but I think wanting to say some things that sound repetitive. Because it's a lot of the similar pieces that we've been having these conversations since March, right? Or at least I have. Um, you all have been doing it for much longer. And so it's not going away anytime soon, like a lot of folks tonight said. And I think knowing that we need to do what we have to do and what we can do, everything, to ensure the safety of our students and our staff and our entire community. Because as many people pointed out tonight, it's not just the students that are affected by this decision. For context, we're a year and a half in, 1918 flu lasted three years. And that was, so we're about halfway there. But that was back in a world when it was very much less connected than we are today. Even though we do have better healthcare, better technology, that only works if people use them. So I think, uh, I keep coming back to who is most at risk and who is most going to be affected by our decision tonight. And it's the same folks that are always most at risk in our district. Our low SES students, over 50% in families. Our special education students. We heard from some parents tonight about how their reality looks very different than most of us that are healthy and have health insurance and don't have those layers added on. And then our English language learners. Again, there's disconnects there. And so the questions I ask are, who's most likely to live in a multi-generational home? It's those folks, right? That'll be more affected by COVID, more at risk for long-term health complications. I also ask questions like who is least likely to have a job that would allow sick time to navigate more quarantines? If that's the route we will be going, um, if we don't make mask mandatory. And so again, those are people like my neighbors that were first ship at, first shift at Northern Engraving that are going to get fired if they have to take too much time off for quarantines and they don't have childcare. I think of those layers on top of everything else, not only of our student cases and our employees cases and then everyone quarantined, but the numbers that aren't there are the 45 to, I don't know, a couple hundred parents, right? If they're single parent or split households scrambling, trying to find childcare. They're also impacted by the quarantine decisions. So whose education is most difficult to provide virtually? Again, it's people in this group that are going to be most impacted by having to go virtual for a quarantine or having to go if we shut down whole buildings, right? And if we don't have masks in place, we can't say that we've tried everything possible to keep everybody safe. The other pieces that point out to me, other districts in the area. I think, uh, the info that was sent to us, only about five of the 20 had zero requirements about masks. I think it was Cassian, it was, um, right, like I think Alma Center, I think there was three more on that list. So we're clearly, if we don't require anything, in the minority there from our local community aspect. I think the quarantines, again, we talked about that a little bit more just now. So that's another piece that is on my mind of wearing masks, reducing the quarantines drastically, reducing the hours that our staff have put in making phone calls. And also, at what point are we going to lose employees because of the burnout? And lose people that are doing a lot of good things for our students? And based off of the feedback that we saw, they want to do what is possible and what is best to keep everybody in person. Because we all know that that's the best situation for everybody. Last time we met, there were two main themes that I heard of choice and, and numbers. And so, uh, I, I think if we make masks required, I would also advocate for us as a board that we revisit these numbers daily as Dr. Van Durin and the team are already doing, uh, to ensure that when we host another meeting, that we can return to optional when COVID allows. I think that's something that as a board, we can build in, we can build in some metrics that I've seen built in in other places as far as transmission rates and caseloads and what that looks like. And so that we're not leaving the public with masks forever, but providing some structure on what revisiting decisions will look like and when it's safe. Um, and then I think along those lines, doing what we can to encourage folks to get vaccinated, right? Like that is 25% ish of our students that are eligible are vaccinated. Right now, people that are filling hospitals and ICUs are predominantly people that are unvaccinated. And so I think that's another mitigation piece that I would hope that we can promote. And if people don't want to wear masks, there is also that SVLA option for them as well. And that's that choice that still exists. And I think the last piece with the numbers, uh, when we met two weeks ago, it was three out of 3,000, right? Wasn't enough to do something drastic like masks, if you consider masks drastic, drastic. And so I hope that we can decide what those numbers look like, what we're willing to be okay with as far as amount of cases of sick individuals, students and employees. Um, and so that we can keep that on the forefront of how many cases we are willing to be okay with before we put in some of these basic safety measures like the masks. So how many people are we going to be affected at the same time with the quarantines, right? We're already at what, 150, 125, something like that last I looked. And so thinking about what those numbers look like. And then on the backend, what do those look like to come back to going optional if we decide to go this route? So those are all of my thoughts, word vomited out into this paper here. But ultimately, I appreciate everyone being here, everyone from the public coming too. Because this is powerful to hear your stories and hear your voices. And, and definitely, we're all better because of the more perspectives we have. So with that, I will second Nancy's motion.
I'll still allow comment, so.
I have one as well. Go ahead.
There's a great amount of information on both sides of this. And a person can just look at this till you're to the point where you don't know anymore. Who's telling the truth and who's not? So at some point, you need to come to what makes some common sense. We spent a tremendous amount of money and time putting mitigation plans in place. Air filtration systems, water fountains, the list goes on and on. Since last year, we have now have people who are vaccinated. We're going to come back to masking again. At what point are we going to move on? We need to move on as a community.
Quiet, please. Just a reminder for everyone, we are going to be in another phase of this COVID. Next year, there's a Delta variant, there's another variant coming out of South America. This stuff is going to keep rotating through the system. Are we going to hide behind masks the rest of our life? Is that what we're going to teach our kids or are we going to try to fight through this? There are other things that we can be doing besides following the CDC's guidelines in the Monroe County Health Department. Over the weekend, I had several phone calls from parents. It was my understanding that up to 60 freshmen were quarantined. Letters went out. I've got one here. Violation isolation warranties, violation of isolation quarantine measures could result in legal action. I'm sorry. There's nothing ethical in that, putting fear in people. I got a real hard time with this. And to think that 60 kids are affected on the same day. It's ridiculous. I sit here and I feel like I'm quartered. I sit here and I feel like I'm cornered. I really feel like I'm cornered. And they're holding, they're using our students, these kids, as pawns in this whole thing. That they, we either mask up, or they're not going to get to go to school. I would like to propose something to the board. I'm in possession of what another school district is doing. And I will read this for the public. It all has to do with this, with this agenda item that's on here. You want to pass something without all the information? General overview, this is a district that has up to 20,000 students. Therefore, the fall of 2021 school year, practicing physical distancing of three feet or more, encouraging regular hand washing, providing hand sanitizers, covering coughs and sneezes, common sense, cleaning and disinfecting frequently touched areas, optional mask wearing for all staff and students. These are the procedures that the school district is proposing, well, they put it in place. Impacted individuals will not be required to quarantine unless they develop COVID symptoms within 14 days following the date of exposure. Are we going to try to work on this problem? Or are we just going to kick the can down the road and get behind a mask and wait for somebody else to figure some of this out? What I would propose-
Quiet.
For this board to think about is to table this tonight and have an emergency meeting tomorrow. One, to get rid of the Monroe County guidelines, to reinstate any student that has been quarantined if they've had five days without symptoms. And to form a committee to try to put together our own guidelines that fit our community. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Prestwood.
All right. So I don't know if you guys remember when chickenpox was a huge deal, right? And now they have vaccines for chickenpox. I remember when my neighbor got chickenpox. My mom made me go next door and rub up on that kid to make sure we all had chickenpox, right? So, I'm not done yet, just wait. So I'm just saying, this follows the same lines as flu and pneumonia. What about measles and polio? That stuff came and it did it, and it ran its course, and we're better because of it. I don't feel that masks is the answer. I don't want to go 10 steps back. A year ago, I was for them. I was, let's do this, I'm a diabetic, I have high blood pressure, I have young students, I'm out in the community. My perception of this whole scenario has changed drastically, mostly within the last few months. I hate to put the mask mandate back in order, and we step back to where we were a year ago. To me, that doesn't make sense. That, it infuriates me, honestly. I have been inundated with phone calls and text messages and Facebook messages and emails and people stopping in my office. I'm out at meetings and people aren't wearing masks. Why are we making our children do it? My 10-year-old, who is now at Meadowview and went to Cataract, he has such a hard time now going out into public and being part of the community. It kills me to no end because of the fear that has been instilled in him. Mom, do we have to wear a mask? No, buddy, you don't have to. And that's when he gets the okay. I think as parents, we need to be role models for our children. We need to keep this, this question of whether we wear a mask or not to the parents. We made that decision two weeks ago. Why are we here again? Keep it with the parents. You know, and to each their own. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. Or do the SVLA. That's why we have that option. That's why we pay that person to do that schooling. That's why we're one of the only districts in the state that created its own SVLA program. We didn't use the state stuff, right? And those that don't want to wear a mask, I've learned more in the last few weeks about people and there are more kids that have special needs in this district than I could ever imagine. And to take another year away from them in their learning process, again, I don't want to go 10 steps back. So I just, I just want to put out there with the whole, like I said, chickenpox and measles and flu. It's here, it's not going anywhere, it's going to stay. But I just, I can't do the masking thing anymore. As I sit here now, you know, two of us are not masked and everybody else is up here. Is that what you truly feel? I mean, vaccines have been out there now for a while, there are other treatments. People have had plenty of time to go and do these other treatments and to get those vaccines, whether they want to or not, they've done it, right? I think that we're going to take steps back if we, if we move forward with the way that some of us want. I didn't call this meeting, I don't want to be here right now, but here I am. So I just, that's all I have to say about it.
I have one more comment.
James, go ahead.
One more comment in regards to a letter that came out from the Monroe County Health Department to a student and family. The parent called to find out some of the details of this. Couldn't tell them anything except it was close contact. Couldn't tell them anything because of HIPAA policies and all this other happy stuff. They're just supposed to accept it. They're just supposed to go home and accept this without any evidence, without any chance of appeal. You are quarantined. That is wrong. It was in your, if any of you were in those shoes and somebody sent you home for no explanation except, well, you might have been close to somebody. You would be crazy.
That's it. Any other discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Solberg.
So again, I can't remember if I did this already, but I do want to thank everybody for being here. And I'm sorry if you didn't get a response from me, but I did get through all of your communications. As we learn, this has always been a fluid situation, and we're always learning through it. And it requires frequent reviewing, especially when significant changes or events or misunderstandings happen. I called this meeting because I felt that something like that happened in the course of the first few days of school. So I called this meeting so that we could all have clarification among ourselves and community members of what has, what happened, the processes of it, and that we could have a discussion about it. No, I don't like this mask, my personal life, there's, most of the time, we don't mask unless there's somebody who feels that that would benefit them. That is where we're at. I where else, where do we go from here, though? With, we go this one direction? Or we go try to make our own guidelines? But we're not the professionals to do that. So what direction do we go next? If we don't do what is suggested to us by the professionals that put this down to us? So I'm looking for input. What, what direction do we go from other board members and?
Quiet, please.
Administration, I'm asking for your guidance there. What would be, what are possibilities for a next step in?
There are a handful of districts that do what the district that James presented. These issues are just starting to be litigated. We have, we employ healthcare professionals that have licensure that is being put at risk. We have liability insurance that is being put at risk. So if you six or seven board members think that you can do better than all of the healthcare professionals that have made the CDC and DHS-
Mr. President, we have a motion and a second. Call the question.
I'm allowing discussion.
I think everybody's had a chance to talk.
I feel that we are all capable adults, and we can come together with Ms. Cooley and if we need to call in another professional. I suggested it a month ago. What is the percentage of absenteeism that is appropriate before a school or classroom is closed, right? 20 to 30% was the answer.
Boarder, the question has been called.
Roll call. Roll call.
Mr. Burns-Gilbert.
Yes.
Ms. Sikorsky.
Yes.
Mr. Rasmussen. Mr. Lukassit. Ms. Prestwood.
No.
Mr. Solberg.
Yes.
Mr. Lyden.
Yes. Motion carries four, two, one absent. Next item up is adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So move. Second?
Second. We have a motion from Mr. Solberg, a second from Mr. Burns-Gilbert to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.